Yes, Mayor, we're good to go with FCC TV. Thank you, and I can do your roll call and meeting notice when you're ready.
Can we just wait for a moment for the Granicus lag? We should be good to.
Are you ready to go now?
Yes.
All right, welcome to the Monday, May 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're pleased you're able to join us this evening. Ms. Mester, would you like to read the notice and also roll?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and compliant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2. And state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operations during the COVID-19 declared a contingency. All participating members of City Council and other boards will be present at this meeting through electronic means. And members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchba/councilmeetings and on FCC TV Cox Channel 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. City Council work sessions are conducted to allow council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is not generally invited to speak. Public comment may be sent to cityclerk@fallschurchba.gov. And all comments are provided in full to the members of council and will be summarized at the next regular city council meeting. For roll call, let me start with Ms. Connolly. Ms. Connolly, I see you. I see a wave. I'm going to come back so we can make sure we have audio. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Ah, great.
I'm having a big delay on my muting, so through the evening tonight, that might happen a few more times.
And let me check for Housing Commission Mayor, who will be joining us for part of the evening. But I do know, I just let in the Chair, Josh Sukar, so Josh, can you hear us for roll call?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, and I just make a brief reminder, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute your audio so we don't get the feedback and reverb and all the rest, I think the meeting will go a little bit better. We also have a busy agenda, including a closed session tonight, so if we can, just keep that in mind, and let's try to keep this meeting going so we don't end up staying too late tonight. Let's go on and get on with the, before we get started, I would like to just acknowledge the Falls Church Women's History March and Walk that occurred over the weekend, particularly our own Vice Mayor Connolly, but also participation by Ms. Hardy and Ms. Hiscott, as well as a number of other prominent, leading women of the city. It was a great event, a great video event the night before, and just wanted to thank everyone and let you know how proud we are of the great work that women in Falls Church are doing today and have done in the past, and I'm certain will do in the future. So, thank you. All right, let's go on to the first item on the agenda, which is the Community Development Authority. Mr. Shields, I know we have a few guests tonight.
We do, and let me just introduce the matter. The creation of a Community Development Authority is something that is in the comprehensive agreement with Falls Church Gateway Partners for the West Falls project up by the high school. Tonight is a briefing and work session, and the request by staff is to schedule first reading for this ordinance at your next meeting on May 10th, and then second reading and public hearing and final adoption, along with ideally a slate of appointees on your meeting of June 14th, 2021. Let me, I will just note our guests that are on this, tonight's meeting, we are joined by representatives of Davenport LLC, and that's Joe Mason and Jen Dirksen. We also have the city CFO in this meeting, and we also have our legal counsel, and they're going to give the majority of the presentation tonight. Let me turn it over to Carol, just for a quick introduction, remarks by her, and then she can introduce our outside legal counsel, and we'll take it from there.
Good evening, counsel. I am going to just be very brief and introduce our outside counsel with the firm of Norton Rose Fulbright. Jim McGetrick, who was for many years with the Fairfax County Attorney's Office doing tax and financial matters, and is now with Norton Rose, and Peter Konzano, not sure if Peter's here yet, I didn't see him, but Jim has drafted the ordinance and the petition for a CDA, as well as the Articles of Incorporation that have been provided to council as part of the items, and he's going to briefly describe for you what we're going to be doing immediately, and then what the plan is further along, and what a CDA is all about. So, I will, with that, I will turn it over to Jim and let him give you the briefing, and then there'll be time for any questions you have.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Jim. Are you with us?
There we go. Thank you, Carol. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
Excellent.
I am, I am Jim McGetrick of the firm of Norton Rose Fulbright, and I'm very pleased to be here to brief you on this matter. I know that you got a staff report on this for the meeting, and so I don't want to go through everything that's already in that, but I just want to hit a few points that you probably should be aware of. Basically, a CDA, a Community Development Authority, is simply a, one of the several vehicles in Virginia law to encourage economic development in the Commonwealth. It is a kind of public-private partnership to enable the development of infrastructure, either more comprehensively, or faster, or more efficiently than perhaps it would be able to be provided otherwise. In effect, the CDA provides a source of funds to construct infrastructure. And as the city attorney told you, this is something that is in the comprehensive agreement that you've already entered into with the Gateway Partners. As I said, the idea is to create a source of, now, first I said it's a partnership, and the important thing here is, the city cannot create one technically on its own. It has to get a petition from the landowners. Now, in this case, it's a little unusual in that the city itself is the landowner at the moment, but the petition, for a number of good reasons, includes, will include, as petitioners, other parties, including the developer, who will have an interest going forward in the project. And that's important because we want to use the petition to make certain representations that will make the CDA function better and more advantageously, and we want those in the petition so they go forward and are part of the, it's all recorded in the land records, and it'll be part of the, any transfers of the property going forward. There are a number of ways a CDA can pay for public improvements, and let me just say, it's the CDA, not the city, that's the other advantage of the CDA, it's not the city itself extending its credit to do anything. It is the CDA. The CDA can finance projects, sell bonds, and those bonds can be secured by a number of sources of revenue theoretically. One is tax increment, but that's not available here because the tax increment is going to be used to pay for the high school itself. That is the increase in tax revenue, regular ad valorem tax revenue that you're going to get as a result of the developer building this project. The other two sources that I want to mention, one is what's called a special tax, the other one is called a special assessment. The terminology is confusing in that the word "assessment" is commonly used in connection with ad valorem taxation. People are said to pay their tax assessment, or ad valorem taxes are assessed against a property. But with respect to a CDA, they are terms of art, and they mean two different things. A special tax is an ad valorem tax, it's just an add-on. Instead of paying whatever your tax rate is per hundred for this regular city tax, you would have an additional so many cents per hundred that would be a special tax that would be levied on properties in the CDA to pay the debt service and expenses of the CDA after the bonds are issued. The other way to do it is with a special assessment, and that is what is being proposed by the developer here. The special assessment is not based on the value of property, it's a different legal concept. It is based theoretically on the benefit to each property that it receives as a result of the improvements being constructed. The, the technical, there are advantages and disadvantages of both. I'll just talk about the special assessment. The advantage of a special assessment is that you can, you come up with a number upfront, and when I say "come up," it is being developed by the firm of Munichap Incorporated, who are consultants to the developer, but who are very, very experienced in this sort of thing. And also, they were involved in Mosaic, for example. They are going to do two things, they're going to develop two very important numbers. One is the actual total amount of the special assessment, which is going to produce, by their calculations, an amount of bonds that can be serviced by that assessment. So, that is your limitation on the amount of bonds that can be sold. That has not happened yet, but the target is to produce $12 to $15 million for the actual construction of special improvements. The bonds will be more than that because you've got to pay for the expenses of the transaction and so forth. The other important number that Munichap will develop is, they will do what they call a rate and method analysis, which was simply a way to allocate the total assessment to individual parcels, and this is going forward. This is a method, so when, if five years from now, a parcel is subdivided, this methodology would be applied to say how much each of the subdivided pieces would be responsible for paying. Under the statute, you can pay the entire assessment upfront, or it can be paid in installments, and that's what's contemplated. Essentially, the installments are in effect like tax payments, there'll be an amount of money that will appear as an additional line on the tax bills, I assume, and that's typically how it's done, and will be paid by the individual parcel owners in the property. The... So, that has yet to be done, and that's, that's something that Munichap is working on now, but we expect that very, very soon. And it's more important for the developer almost, because there's a certain amount of money that they think this can support, and I assume Davenport will review Munichap's work and sign off on it and on the estimates that are made. The, the schedule, I have to say one thing, that we are anticipating that you will receive this petition in the next few days, but we are still negotiating some of the terms of the petition. We do not have final agreement on all the terms, and so everyone is reasonably optimistic, but that is, that's still a target that we're aiming at. Now, just in terms of what's going forward, if you get a petition, there's a public hearing process down the line. If the council chooses to, you create the CDA, you appoint members of the governing body of the CDA, and then there will be a process where we go through the financial work, and "we" is not so much me, the lawyer, but the financial people, but there will be developed a number of steps along the way to get to the point where the CDA can actually issue bonds, which I understand is anticipated very early next year, and everybody is aware of that. The developer has a laundry list of improvements that potentially could be funded with this, it's all infrastructure. What actually gets funded and how much, what portion of the, get funded by the CDA bonds is really a function of how much money there is, and that's to be determined. But the idea is that the developer will construct these, that money will be dispersed to pay for them as they are constructed, and all that infrastructure will go to support the, the whole development being proposed out there. Carol, I'm not sure if you want any more detail or comment on it, but that's a quick overview of where we are with it.
Great, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to questions, unless there are other folks who are going to present from staff? Carol or Wyatt?
Can I just, I'll just say a couple words. So, what is coming up before you now is the petition, and what'll really be before you, we hope, next week, but it depends on whether everything gets settled, is the petition just to create the Community Development Authority and to appoint its board. So, that doesn't enable any issuance of bonds, and the schedule's moving along, but the issuance of bonds would come back before you, the CDA would request your approval, and it would come back before you, before the CDA could issue any bonds. Right now, you just create the CDA so they can do things like pass the reimbursement resolution, which enables all the expenses to be paid when the bonds are issued, and they will have their organizational meeting and begin the work of working with the whole team to get ready to issue the bonds. So, things are a little ways down the road. The, it's anticipated, the membership of the CDAs in the staff report lines, beginning at line 90, it's anticipated that it would be one city council member, one EDA member, as they will be the owner of the property, one staff member, a city resident member, and a member suggested by the developer and appointed by the council in its sole discretion. But ultimately, the members of the CDA board will be appointed and removed by council. And so, and the bonds are not going to be backed by the city, either by a subject-to-appropriation obligation, or by a general obligation. That has been removed from the plan for these bonds. So, I think that's, in general, sort of where we are, where we're headed, and I would like to note that indeed Peter Konzano has been on this, and Peter, if you can say a few words to introduce yourself, then your photo pops up and everybody can see who you are.
So, good evening, it's nice to, it's nice to see everyone again, and we're looking forward to helping the city assess what it would like to do with this financing, and good to see everyone again.
Alrighty, so then if there are, I don't know Wyatt, if you have anything else, or we can take questions?
Carol?
Yeah.
Carol, this is Jim, I have one, one more thing I should have said, and just so the board understands. The city council and the governing body of the CDA have to work together to levy either a special assessment or a special tax. The way it works is, the city can't do it on their own, but the CDA board can't do it themselves either. The way it works is the CDA board requests the city council to levy a special assessment or special tax, and then the city council does as they please. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, and then it's collected, just like taxes are collected, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we have a few questions. Let's go on to council questions. I believe Mr. Snyder has his hand up, I'm waiting for my screen to load here, but Mr. Snyder, do you have a question?
Sure, I think Vice Mayor Connolly had her hand up first, I wanted to defer to her if she wanted to go first.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mr. Snyder. I have a real simple question, actually, that can start the conversation, and that is, if the city is not backing the bonds, who is backing the bonds? Who's responsible for these?
The backing of the bonds is a source of funds. The back, in other words, the special assessment will be what the market is told backs the bonds. That's how you're going to get, the market will be told, this is how you're going to get paid back. We're going to collect the assessment, and you're going to get paid back by the assessment. If that doesn't happen, for whatever reason, then as a matter of law, the way we're going to set this up, neither the CDA nor the city is legally responsible for paying. If, let's say, worst, worst possible case, let's say, for some reason, you cannot collect the special assessment, it turns out, that is a risk that the bond purchasers take.
Okay, so, does that affect our, the city's standing, our bond rating in the future if, for some reason, we can't collect?
Joe, do you know?
Yeah, I'd rather, you let Joe Mason answer that.
Yeah, this is Joe. So, these bonds are non-recourse to the city. That said, you, you want to try to support this project as best you can, we certainly do not want a default or a failure on this bond issue, but again, legally speaking, it's non-recourse to the city. The rating agencies are not going to automatically downgrade you, but I think they would expect that the city, if for some reason this project failed, or was abandoned by a Gateway Partners, that the city would, would effectively work to try to figure out sort of a Plan B, whether to remarket the project in a different way, and so forth, but since they're non-recourse to you, you have not, if there's a, if there's a default, there's no direct linkage, and the rating agencies cannot directly, effectively downgrade you because you failed to substitute your payments. Now, when this, this project was first put into the comprehensive agreement, there was some optionality around the city potentially providing its moral obligation backstop to the bonds, which means that if there was a failure of the special assessment or a special tax to pay the debt service, the city, under a moral obligation pledge, would be responsible, or at least the executive branch would be responsible for submitting for legislative branch's approval and appropriation request to make up any debt service shortfalls. That is, that is a different situation where the city is explicitly putting its credit on the line. If you were to put your moral obligation behind these bonds and fail to step up and make that payment, then your crediting would be affected. But that particular clause, if you will, the moral obligation backstop, has been removed in the amended comprehensive agreement. There's no moral obligation backing of the city involved in the CDA bonds as we sit here discussing it this evening. Does that answer your question?
That helps, yes, thank you.
Ma'am, I might also say, part of the negotiation that's going on now with respect to the terms of the petition is to try to include provisions that minimize the risk of default of the bonds without imposing any responsibilities on the city or the CDA.
And this is Carol, again, Joe or Peter, could you address who buys these bonds? Because they're not individual citizens generally buying these bonds, right?
That's correct, this is Joe speaking again. Typically, bonds of this nature are marketed to accredited investors in $100,000 denominations. You could contrast that with your normal City of Falls Church general obligation bond sold in $5,000 denominations and are available to, you know, city residents, retail investors, what have you. These are, forgive the term of art, but these bonds are typically marketed to what the marketplace calls big boy or big lady investors that are capable of making an independent investment decision without a lot of handholding. So, in, in the context of the city's normal general obligation bonds, you, as the city issue what's called a preliminary official statement, which is a disclosure document, you know, detailing information about the city, your financial condition, your economics, et cetera. Contrast the CDA bonds, it's what's called a preliminary limited, limited being the operative term, preliminary limited offering memorandum, and the limitation is intended to be to sophisticated investors, primarily, if not totally institutional investors, who are capable of making an independent purchase decision on the road. It's not mom-and-pop retail, like the city's GEO bonds could be, these are, these bonds are being placed for sophisticated institutional investors.
All right, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Sure, thanks a lot. So, Vice Mayor Connolly asked the fundamental question, and I'm, I'm still hearing a bit of two answers. The one answer is, no, technically, you're not on the hook for these things if the payments fail, but you might be on the hook anyway in terms of your bond rating. So, I think we still need to wrestle this one to the ground, I appreciate the legal position here, but I want to know more about that. The second question is, what are these, what is this financing? Tell me more about the infrastructure. And let's assume that the bonds are issued, do they immediately pay who's ever doing the infrastructure, or what if the bonds are issued, the payments don't come forward, but the infrastructure work has been done? In that case, who pays for the infrastructure? Because theoretically, those are contractors who are going to want to be paid. So, tell me what, Vice Mayor Connolly laid out one scenario, I'm laying out a different one, so maybe you could explain to me, A, what is the infrastructure? one, so maybe you could explain to me, A, what is the infrastructure? And B, would that ordinarily be provided by the city or by the developer? And what, what is the circumstance if the bonds, for some reason or another, there's an early default? Or there's a default where the default occurs after the infrastructure work is done? So why don't you tell me, provide some answers to those questions?
Well, I can take one shot at it. The, the, the special assessment, you know, you get the money to pay for the infrastructure by selling the bonds. The, the assessment and all that that goes on forward is just for the purposes of paying back the bonds. So presumably whoever builds the infrastructure is getting paid out of bond proceeds, and so they're not involved if at some point down the line, something happens and you no longer have the money to pay back the bonds that you borrowed, pay back on the bonds you borrowed.
This is Peter, to add to the point that Jim just made, it's, it's important to note that the infrastructure improvements are not pledged in any way as security for the repayment of the bonds. So a disappointed bondholder who lost all or part of his or her or its investment would have no rights to, to levy on or to somehow, somehow get at the, get at the, the public infrastructure that was financed with bond proceeds. They're not pledged in any way. They couldn't legally be pledged in any event, and they won't be.
So there would be no security underlying the bond except the promise to pay from the, the revenue, the designated revenue source. Let me ask you another question. The board of the CDA, can they be individually sued or can the institutions they represent be sued for malfeasance that led to the default? If there was a default? In other words, the city may not be on the hook as a guarantor of the bond payments, but could the individual members of the board, either in their individual capacity or in their official capacity, be sued under a directors and officers theory? And if so, how do we protect ourselves and them as individuals?
The, members and officers of, of any board, of any political subdivision in this, the CDA is a political sub, a separate legal entity from the city. They would have as much or as little protection as, as members of a city council or any other public body. There are certainly lots, and I would defer to Carol's on some of these points, under Commonwealth law, there's, there's all kinds of, of immunities and, you know, protections for public office holders, and these are public officials in that sense. I would caution any public official that, you know, that, under the federal securities laws, if there were allegations of that sort, however far-fetched, anybody can file a lawsuit if they can, you know, if they got access to a computer, unfortunately in the modern age. But, but the, a properly structured transaction with, with, you know, no criminality should, should have no higher risk profile for that kind of lawsuit than any other action taken by any of the other city's boards and various entities. As to the more general discussion, I would defer to Carol on, on that.
I, I completely agree with that. It's just like anybody would be on the EDA or any other entity, and they are protected by Virginia law, and they would also have protection by insurance to backstop that, the city's insurance. But it's, in general, people who serve on these boards are protected by complete sovereign immunity.
Okay, and that's a critical point, that it's a political subdivision and not a private entity. So you're getting the protection under Virginia law for a political unit, okay? Finally, what is the infrastructure that these bonds would pay for?
And I, I think the answer to that is that it is things like utilities, streets, common areas, but I think the precise definition of which utilities are, is it going to be used to pay for has not been decided at this point. Is that correct, Wyatt?
Yes, that's part of the exercise that we go through with, with Munich Cap and through the Plom that Joe was describing.
So would this infrastructure be normally something the developer would put in or something the city would put in?
So that's, that's an important point. And where you see these types of economic development tools is typically places where there is a higher level of placemaking or of quote "public amenities" as part of an economic development effort. And so you see a CDA at, in Short Pump and Henrico, you see one at the Mosaic Center, you see one at the Clarendon Commons. So where there's a higher level than your typical project, that's where a CDA can be helpful to fund those types of public improvements that are so important for placemaking.
So, that didn't answer the question though, for this one. Is the infrastructure different in this one than, than what you just?
So what we envision it will be for is for the, for the layout of the commons, for the, for the roads, road network, and also possibly some of the underground infrastructure. These are all things that ultimately, if they're, if these bonds are to be tax exempt, which we are anticipating that they will be, these will be public infrastructure that will be, at the end of the day, owned by the city. We anticipate that much of this infrastructure, however, will be covered by a maintenance agreement where the private developer will actually maintain them, according to the standards that they're looking for to create the placemaking and the great retail environment that we're shooting for here, but they would be owned by the city if the CDA proceeds are used.
Final question, would one ordinarily expect the developer to pay for this out of the developer's pocket, or would it be usual to do a process like this?
I think that it sort of depends on the type of project, because for instance, if you had a single block project like Founder's Row, a lot of the utilities are placed around the site by the city as the normal public utilities and infrastructure, but they, but a few things are often, you know, provided by the developer. But because of the size of this site and the fact that all the streets running through it, and the need for all of those, all of that infrastructure, the commons and all the utilities, because they are part of a bigger project with numerous blocks, they are being provided by the developer, but through this financing mechanism of a CDA. There are more things than we would normally expect a developer to do, but that's because this development is across many blocks.
Thanks, and then, and then one final question. I, I think you, I, I think you got the, the questions that I was interested in. So thanks much for these, for these answers, but I do want to know more about worst case and what would be the expectations of Wall Street if this were to, to not work out the way it's planned. Thank you.
Mr. Lipton House?
So I'm comfortable with the concept of the CDA, and it's something that I've, I've supported from the beginning. I do have a question though about your recommendation to use a special assessment as opposed to a tax. Could you guys explain to me just very briefly why you're choosing a special assessment versus an actual tax applied to the assessment base?
Jim, do you want to address that? I think the request to do it as a special assessment came from FCGP, and I think, but I think the city believes, or our team after discussion believes that, that will probably, that will serve the project well. And one of the items under discussion for the petition and then the ordinance will be whether there will be a backup mechanism such as a tax in the event that the special assessment is not sufficient at some point in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
There are advantages and disadvantages to both a special assessment and a special tax. The, the big disadvantage to a special tax is you've got to make assumptions now, because you're going to sell the bonds, you know, before you build everything, you've got to sell the bonds, and you've got to have in your mind an idea of what everything's going to be worth.
I get that, okay.
Afterward. So there, there are, there are advantages. One of the advantages, the advantages of a special tax is you can change the tax rate as you go along if you need more money. The, the big advantage of a special assessment, assessment is you can decide upfront how much you need, and it's based on current, you know.
Okay.
And, and financial advisors are very good at this, at estimating what they think interest rates are going to be and all that. So it's, there's pluses and minuses to both, but here the developer very strongly prefers a special assessment, and that's not unusual, for what it's worth. That's not at all unusual.
That's fine, and I'm, I'm sure it's not. The, the question that I have about the special assessment versus taxes, so I understand the special assessment is kind of, it's straight line payment on the debt, right? So you've got a known debt amount, you've got an assessment, it's paid in equal monthly increments, and it retires that debt at some point in time. My question about the mechanics of the tax rate, obviously the amount of money that the tax itself would generate in order for us to service the debt is dependent upon fluctuation in the assessed values, which as you point out, you have to make certain assumptions. My question is, let's say we have $15 million in debt, and let's say we, we make assumptions as to the valuation growth and then what that tax rate would need to be. If we see valuation growth in the assessment base at the West End that is in excess of those, those assumptions, and we generate additional revenue each year, are we reconciling that and adjusting future tax rates to try to keep that revenue that's coming in as close to our projections as possible? Or do we take any, any excess revenue that we are planning and bank that for future payment, and then maybe we just are able to retire the debt later on? Or I'm sorry, earlier than we expected?
Are you talking about the regular ad valorem tax that Falls Church levies on property?
That, that's correct.
It's yours. It's your money. If, if, if you, in other words, my understanding is you're going to use it to pay the cost of the high school, but suppose everything is wonderful and it turns out to be a lot more than you need for the high school, it's your money.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm talking, so we, so we've got the regular tax rate, and then we have a tax rate for the CDA. And my understanding is the tax rate that's part of the CDA is applied to the assessed value at the West End, and that, that additional tax rate goes to pay down the debt service of this CDA bond, is that correct?
If, if we were using a special tax.
That's what I'm talking.
But that's not the proposal. The proposal is.
I know it's not, I know it's not the proposal, but I'm asking you the mechanics of how that special tax would work.
The mechanics would be that the revenue from the special tax can only be used to pay the, the cost of those improvements, which is another way of saying to pay the debt service on the bonds sold to provide them. So that would not provide any extra money for the city. You would have to wind that tax rate down as you paid off those bonds.
Right. However, conceptually, because of the CDA, let's say we get to year 10 of 15, and we find out that we have paid off, because of the assessment growth, that special tax has generated enough money to pay off that initial bond. We would have the ability to issue new bonds for other work or other investments we want to make specific to that 10-acre site that, that would allow us to keep that tax rate in place, and we would just simply have to adjust it accordingly to account for the new debt service. Is that correct?
Only if the property owners asked you to.
I'm sorry, what do you mean? If the property owners asked us to do what?
The petition itself is the property owners asking you to set up a CDA to provide certain improvements and do things. And, and if you want to do something else with the money, say 15 years from now, because you have so much more and everything has been wonderful, you, it's not up to the city by itself to decide, okay, we're going to do more wonderful things here. The property owners have to, have to be on board.
When you say, when you say property owners, you mean only the property owners inside of the CDA area?
Yes, yes, exactly.
That is very, that is very different than the way that it was explained to me when we first talked about that, which is, the city would retain the right to make a determination as to what we needed to invest in that area of town. And I will give you an example, Jim, and that is, if we find out that we need to build another fire station or satellite police station at the 10-acre because of the, the number of residents that are living there, and we have to make that investment, it is specific to that area of town. You're telling me we would have to receive formal approval from, I would assume, taxpayers inside of the CDA to issue bonds in order to keep that, that CDA going?
Yeah, I'm looking for the, I'm trying to find the code section that applies to that, but.
Because that, and let me, I'll let you go ahead and answer that, and then I'll, I'll explain the, the issue that I have with that.
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying. I don't understand the CDAs to be an unlimited source of money for the.
My, my understanding is that the CDA has the authority to not only manage the oversight and administration of the payments and the reconciliation, but the CDA as well as the city, and, and via the city, the city council has the ability to issue bonds, and I'm sure there's a threshold that may require a voter referendum, but would have the ability to issue bonds that could fall within that CDA that a special tax or special assessment would remain levied on those assets. That's a very, very important point. I'm not just saying that for you, but I'm, I'm saying to everyone, because if not, you're telling me we have a CDA that'll pay for one, one piece of infrastructure investment, and then you have to go ask them if we can, if, if we can sell bonds to pay for other things that'll be very specific for that 10-acre site, which is going to carry significant public service costs compared to other areas of the city. And so you don't have to answer that now, but that's going to be a very critical component to this CDA, and if that is not the case, then I would certainly like to know as soon as possible, because that is very different than my understanding.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll all get together and look into that a little more detail and get back to you all.
Okay.
Mr. Duncan, then Ms. Hardy.
I hope this is not off point, but later in the meeting, we're discussing dropping a couple million dollars of the city's money to move the natural gas infrastructure that relates to this project. My understanding, it's, you know, the sole reason for moving it is because of the project. I guess what I'm wondering is, is that an expense that the city can, you know, take on now, but bill the CDA for once the project is up and going, and if not, why not?
I, I think that's something that it may be that the outside attorneys haven't been involved in, so I would suggest, again, we can look at that a little more closely and then get you a better answer on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I had similar question as what Mary Beth talked about at the beginning around the moral backing, so I think I'm getting comfortable with it. The second question is, for the public infrastructure that this funds, so the streets, the commons, I think I heard Wyatt say that those things will be owned by the city but will be maintained by the developer, is that right?
Correct. Correct.
And is that agreement something that needs to be part of the CDA, or is that something we need to write into the VCs?
The, I think that is an issue for the VCs in terms of, what they typically are for a development is that there's a statement in the VC. are for a development is that there's a statement in the VCs that a maintenance agreement shall be executed, um, you know, for X, Y, and Z infrastructure.
Okay, um, so I guess before we approve the CD, I guess I'd want to make sure that we do have that as a penciled into the VC so that whatever infrastructure we're agreeing to finance through these bonds, that we will have some sort of maintenance agreement in place, even if we don't have the exact language. My last question is around the actual tax. So I think I read in the staff report that it'd be no more than fifteen cents, I think, per hundred dollar assessed value or so, or that's what our estimation is right now. Do we have a sense of what the, I guess, assessment will be once you add it on top of the city's tax rate? And then ultimately, do we think that that'll keep us competitive in other commercial areas in the region?
Well, again, we're not, we are not talking about a tax. We're talking about a special assessment. My understanding is that Munichap's marching orders from their client, the developer, is to develop a a special assessment that is functionally equivalent to the amount they think they would raise with a tax in that amount at some point, some unspecified point in the future that they've never told us. So but that is between Munichap and the developer. That's that's what the developer, I think, is telling Munichap that's what they want to pay. Um, Munichap is going to presumably figure out a number and then do the equivalent of that in a special assessment um and then present that to us. But that that doesn't uh won't directly affect the city because it it it, there isn't a special tax being contemplated.
Yeah, whether it's called an assessment or tax, ultimately, the future owners of this ten acre site will have to pay more taxes than if their business was located elsewhere, correct?
Exactly right.
Yes. And so that's what I'm asking is, you know, we know other regions like Mosaic and Tysons also have extra taxes on top of the regular tax. My question is, do we anticipate that that final number, whether it's again a tax or an assessment, will keep this competitive with the rest of the commercial areas in the region?
I know that Mosaic does not, simply because the way Mosaic worked out, uh, it was a successful development, the tax increment has been more than enough to pay the the bonds uh at Mosaic. That was that they had, they were using, they weren't using the tax increment for anything else. The tax increment was going to be used, a subject to appropriation by the uh, the county board, was used to pay the taxes. The backup to that, uh, if if the board did not levy, choose to uh appropriate uh tax increment, or if it wasn't enough, the first backup was a special assessment calculated based on Munichap's rate and method analysis, the same thing they're purporting to do here. And then the backup to that, if if they, if that, for whatever reason, did produce the money, then you would levy a special tax. Uh, so it was like a multi-level backup, but but the reality is, my understanding at least, is that that neither the special assessment nor a special tax was ever levied uh in Mosaic, although it was a possibility.
And this, or I would add that um in conversations with Munichap and the developer over the course of a year or so, the the equivalent um special tax rate of fifteen cents per hundred dollars of assessed value translates to a translates to a special assessment of like amount. Um, that was deemed by the developer. That's why they directed Munichap to size the bond issue within that parameter because there's any special assessment that was passed along to current property owners or any future subdivided property owners at fifteen cents per hundred dollars of AV. That was deemed to be an amount that future potential owners or lesses or what have you of the property within the district, they could tolerate and that it would be competitive with surrounding jurisdictions. To go significantly above that would be anti-competitive. To be significantly below that would be more competitive, but the parameter that they directed Munichap to size everything at is deemed by the developer to be within competitive reason, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. I think that was the answer I was looking for. I guess for city purposes, Wyatt, I guess we have an interest to make sure that this is competitive as well. Um, do we have a sense of, I guess, for, you know, I guess Mosaic being the closest one and Boston Quarter, I think, was also cited, are they comparably sized kind of bonds and therefore um impacts on the ultimate tax that the property owners are paying?
Well, I think what we could do to answer your question is just provide you with some examples around the region of what the tax rate is after the base tax plus the special assessment slash um special district tact is added on and just let you see that. Um, that that'll provide some context.
Great. Thank you.
I also would mention, while I don't think there's any add-on at Mosaic, there are many different kinds of special taxing districts. For example, in Fairfax County, I know because I set most of them up and that pay for a host of things, rail to Dulles, improvement of Route twenty-eight, uh, transportation improvements at Tyson's Corner, and they're all funded by an extra so many cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. So it's it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a common financing technique, although none of them involved a community development authority. They used other kinds of special tax districts.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got a few questions and then let's wrap up this portion of the meeting. We do have a lot more to go this evening. So Wyatt, you'd mentioned that uh these improvements will be owned by the city. It's my understanding these streets would be quote private streets and not, uh, you know, dedicated or released to the to the city. Uh, what is your understanding about the streets?
So it in the context of the kind of the bucket of list of infrastructure that could be paid for by the CDA, we've been looking at that issue. And so the way you described it is exactly what the original idea was. Um, the kind of replacement for that idea, because, you know, the city has not had an interest in maintaining these streets. Um, so they will be built by the developer, uh, using in whole or in part by the proceeds of the CDA. They would then uh be subject to a maintenance agreement uh while while they're owned by the city, uh, that the developer then would maintain them. And so I think we would get to the kind of the endpoint that the city envisioned at the beginning, uh, but um, we would also be able to use the these proceeds uh to create these public improvements.
So this, the they would release their ground lease as to these streets, um, and then they would be unencumbered back to the city. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And how about other infrastructure? You'd indicated they'd be owned by the city. I don't know what else these will pay for, whether it's storm sewer lines or um, you know, landscaped areas or whatever it might be. Who's who's going to have the ownership of those?
Uh, so we will go through them sort of individually and um, and um, anything that is funded by the proceeds of this CDA's bonds will be owned by the city and then subject to a maintenance agreement. So it could include all the things that you've listed.
So if it were to include some landscaping, what do they do? Do they release their uh ground lease as to some landscaping areas? I mean, how does that work mechanically?
So uh, potentially what we're looking at is a subdivision whereby the public where the the streets are um, are basically carved out of the leasehold so that they are um, that that ground then is owned by the city and um, and then the the roads then are are public. And they were always going to have a public easement on them in any event, even if they were wholly part of the leasehold. Um, uh, so when they were called private streets, the public was going to have access to them. And so these are just um, basically ways that we will work through with Munichap as they identify the infrastructure that would be best suited for the use of these bonds. We will keep them in public ownership uh as described.
All right. And also, I think one thing to consider um is the grant we received as relates to these um streets, or at least the primary street, and how that's going to impact the CDA and what's financed and what's not. So to me, it may be a complex intersection of the grant we received from the state from and the CDAs, the CDA.
I I would just note that the uh original scope of that grant is for off-site improvements. So these are for improvements that are in the Route seven right-of-way or in the Haycock Road right-of-way, uh, not interior to the site. And so um, I think the point is, is a, is a good point and we'll keep an eye on that. But there was an intention to have uh that grant fund off-site improvements, whereas the CDA will improve uh onsite improvements.
I was talking about the new one, the smart cities or smart.
Oh, the ten million.
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, that uh, that will need to be um sort of handled. The um, so uh, I I think that's a good point. The, you know, a lot of that's going to be smart city centric. And um, so yeah, we'll need to keep that separate as well.
I would just make sure offline, our consultants are aware of the scope of that um uh grant. And so people, when they go forward with this, can understand the intersection of that and the CDA, because I think there's going to be some subtle rub points on that. Uh, let me ask another question. Are these bonds callable? Or what's the status of those if we wanted, for whatever reason, for them to be paid off early? Do they have to go there full term?
As a legal matter, these are typically issued, uh, and the financial advisor can give you more detail with uh, you know, with with optional redemption rights and that would uh enable the city to either pay it off or to refinance on a more favorable basis.
So let me just ask Joe real quick, Mason. So with these bonds, if for whatever reason we want to get rid of them, the developer goes belly up and, you know, we don't want to have this floating around for the next twenty years, what's the status of those? Do we need to take special account for that?
Mayor, the bonds would typically have a ten-year par call on them. Um, they typically go for anywhere from twenty to thirty years. We've not seen the the Munichap projections as to how far out they take them. Um, but in my experience, most of them go to twenty-five or thirty years. So if the project were to become a failure or be abandoned in the first ten years, and you wanted to restructure or or refinance the bonds in some way, shape or form, um, there may be a cost to doing so uh in terms of, depending on where interest rate markets are, of course, um, to escrowing funds to the call date, but you'd certainly have the flexibility to to do that. Um, the I mean, if these were tax increment bonds, if we had tax increment above what we expected, we could pay bonds off early. But the way special assessment bonds work, it's a total special assessment, a portion to each property, property owner, spread over the term of the bonds. So they're technically, on an annual basis, should be no excess special assessment that we could use to prepay the bonds. Um, but there will be flexibility to to refinance or restructure as needed.
So let's say the project goes belly up. We just want to get rid of the bonds. We don't want to hang around with them for the next twenty years. Is that possible just to pay them off? Or do we have to keep them as dead on the books because there's not a prepayment prepayment option?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah. So let's say the project goes belly up. It's not that we want to refinance them to get a better rate or whatever. It's just we want to get rid of the the bonds because the project fails for some reason or whatever. Um, can we just pay them off? Or do we have to wait some period of time before we can do that?
Well, you're under no obligation to pay them off.
So let's say, I mean, what we heard earlier, though, is that we may want to, it may be either desirable or necessary to retain our rating with other folks or, you know, or great credit uh outlook, that we may want to do that, right? I mean, that that's what I heard. Maybe I didn't hear that right, but I thought I heard, of course, you have no legal obligation to do it. Oh, that's the good news. The bad news is if you keep on, if you want to keep borrowing in the world, that I it sounds like the credit markets don't look very favorably on that. And so it may be it's our own self-interest to pay it off, even though we're not legally obligated to do that. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's a little bit of a um, it's a, just a touch of a bridge too far, if I could use that phrase. I don't know that you, as the city, would would prepay those bonds. You're not obligated to. And the bondholders would, in a, in a workout or default situation, would certainly thank you very kindly for making them whole. I think what's more likely to happen, and I'd welcome Peter or Jim's comments in this regard as well, is that because you have a prepayment provision, you would more likely uh engage a legal team and a consulting team and try to find um another development team or alternatively, a high-yield bond fund to come in and take over this bond issue and take over this project. And once they'd settled on a new plan of finance as to how to work it out, they would refinance the bonds with your blessing, with the CDA's blessing, um, in a way that allowed the project to proceed in a completely different capacity. So I I don't foresee a situation where where Falls Church steps in and makes good on all of the debt service on these bonds. I see it more likely that it can be a workout situation that the city, working with consultants and other investors, jumps in and tries to make lemonade out of a batch of lattes. Peter or Jim, any additional thoughts?
This is Carol McCosbury. I I I suggest that, I mean, some of this, as we get closer to knowing what the actual bonds will be and how that will work as Munichap does it work, does its work. We may want to talk about sort of pitfalls and all in a closed session at some point down the road. But I think one thing that's important to understand is there's three types of obligation the city could have on bonds. There's the general obligation, when the city would have the legal obligation to repay them. There's the second one, which is what's often referred to as the moral obligation, but it but is the subject to appropriation bonds. And in that case, if we had our subject to appropriation backing on the bonds, then the city might have some reputational risk, but would not have a legal obligation to pay the bonds. And the Virginia courts are very clear on that. But what we are considering here at this point is a third type, and that is the city will have absolutely no backing, not even a subject to appropriation backing on the bonds. And therefore, I think your reputational risk would be much less, almost nothing. I suppose someone could try to assign it to the city, but we would have no neither a legal obligation, nor we would, would we have even an obligation to consider appropriating the money. And and that's, it's that third type that we're talking about here, in this case, um, under the amendment to the comprehensive agreement.
All right. Um, it sounds like there's more work to be done and more conversation to be had on this. We do have other items on the agenda. So maybe what I'll suggest is we kind of leave this conversation now as sort of a starter uh conversation with respect to the CDA. And maybe you all can look at some of the questions that were raised if there's additional information needed. And this will be a continuing conversation. But we appreciate this first taste of the technical nature and requirements of CDA and we'll be having further conversations about that coming up. Uh, but why don't we go ahead and move on to the next item on the West Falls Church um project, which is the discussion of ADU units and voluntary concessions. So Mr. Shields?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. And so what we will do tonight is is um, wanted to uh just note some of the kind of the key points that council has made through the process and how they've been addressed uh by the developer. And they have a few slides just to go through that with you. And then we'll wrap up with a discussion of uh of of the sort of final points in the VCs uh that we are working on and expect to address. Carly, did you want to make any introductory comments? I know we've got a few slides from the developer just to walk us through the changes they've made in response to the comments from the council in the last uh last three meetings.
Yes. Good evening, Council. Um, I'll just note that in the staff report, there's also a couple responses to the questions that were raised, just on the fiscal impact questions. Uh, but the rest will be addressed by the But the rest will be addressed by the Falls Church Kate With Partners' presentation. And then I can.
So Cindy, are you able to pull up that presentation?
I am, I have it ready.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, Laura, we'll, we'll turn it over to the development team.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Laura Schoenfeld from Hoffman &amp; Associates. And again, we are just going to be going through kind of the major issues addressed in the staff report and that have come up over the last few work sessions. So we'll just take a quick flip through here, and I have most of the VC stuff at the end. So that'll let us wrap that up. I just included the site plan again to, you know, familiarize us all again with the, with the Falls Church development. But let's go to the next page. One of the points we've been discussing extensively in the voluntary concessions is how to find the right balance between reassuring the city on kind of the retail plan and what's primary retail, what's secondary retail, what are going, what's going to really activate the space, while still giving us the flexibility to not only make a leasing plan that, you know, is going to be great in 2024, but also, as the voluntary concessions continue with the land, that will give the flexibility for the future, so that every time a retail change, something that doesn't even exist now, would be brought in, then it doesn't have to go through an entire full amendment process. So we've been working pretty extensively to, again, delegate where the primary and secondary would go. And that's what this, this is part of our submission that came in on Friday also. This is showing the, the yellow are really the most active spaces, again, more like restaurants, things that are really going to bring the hubs of activity. And then the secondary is, again, great services, great uses, but some things that may be slightly less active than, than that. So what, another question that's come up in discussing all the retail and especially the additional permitted uses we're asking for, is kind of, what do these places feel like? What do they look like? Some people are unfamiliar with, with some of the concepts. So I gathered some pictures on the next slide to just talk through kind of how these current types of retail are a little bit different than what's, what's allowed in B2, but again, are going to help us activate the space in, in a way that is really forward-looking. And so what I've put on here, and starting in the top left, we have brewery. In the top right, we have a winery and their tasting room. So those are two of the additional permitted uses we're asking for. We'd also talked about hair salons, and I think people may, may think of kind of where old ladies go to get their curlers put in, but there are these really modern, bright, well-designed places like the Dry Bar, and then, yeah, what she's pointing to there, that where people go to get their hair done, and they feel modern and bright and are very activated. And then I put in the bottom right, Soul Cycle, both indoor and outdoor. Again, it's a, it's a gym, but it's bright and inviting, and it's going to have a lot of activity in a different way than a big-box gym would. And then in the bottom left, an example of kind of a higher-end bowling alley or different games, shuffleboard, things like that, that have become very popular in the last 10 years or so. Something like a pinstripes, if people have been to that, and Pike and Rose. So, next slide. So that's kind of the retail discussion going to, and the next question that we had, and again, we can come back and answer any other questions, but I'm just respecting the timeframe and going through the answers with the information that we wanted to make sure you, you saw. So bike parking locations and bike lanes, there was a question about where are our bike lanes and shared use paths, which are laid out here. And their bike racks are all the numbered items. And then we've talked about the relocated Capital Bike Share Station, and we did take council's advice to put it at the, kind of right at the entrance by Commons. It had been more closer, sorry, down the street from that a little bit. So we, in discussing with council, determined that that was the best place to relocate the, the current bike share that's on the site. Next slide. Another question that's come up is the western facade of the B garage that faces the high school, and kind of what we, what we're going to do to really make it feel more exciting, and how we would leave space for the schools to have their own art project, that we are creating the, the embeds and kind of the infrastructure for it to hang up. So in the kind of darkened areas that are the frames at the entrances of the garage, we talked about this in, in the last few work sessions, those will be brick. So that will bring a different texture and color. And then in the middle, there are three different examples. We have to leave a large amount of the garage open for fresh air, so it can be a naturally-ventilated garage. But we, the school could either do a kind of large central panel, a couple of more mesh panels, or smaller solid panels, or something else of that variety. And that would work with the embeds that we've put into the garage. And then we could have these, sorry, vines, oop, just getting to the, the pretty part, these vines growing up probably the first 15 to 20 feet, which is represented here in the, the green that's shown on the left images. So the vines kind of thin out after about 15 to 20 feet, so we thought it made sense to really concentrate the vines to allow that kind of ground plane experience to have the greenery, and then above that, to give the space for the, for the school project. And these are some examples of how the vines would look. We do still need to work with the schools, because the garage is exactly on the property line, and we probably need about 18 inches over the property line to put some of the planters that, where the vines would grow out of. So this is still subject to discussion with the schools, but we think it's a, it's a great way to bring all these different pieces together on that very visible facade. Next page. This, Letty, this is a specific one I know that we had talked about with you in the last few times, the Via and the pedestrian connection to, from Hancock, that I know you're thinking, these are the same things I saw last time. The great thing is, we have renderings in process. They should be done by the middle of next week, but they will be a view from the ground, looking kind of up the stairs, and then from the experience at the top of the stairs that you're seeing in the top right here. So two more photorealistic renderings, but we need about 10 more days to get those done, but they will be done before the 24th. So we look forward to, to sharing those with you then. Next slide. So a big question that's come up, and we have our landscape architect and civil engineer on the phone, or on this call too, but a question's come up in all of our meetings and town halls, has been about stormwater management, what is our strategy, and kind of how does it work, and how does it take into account bigger storms? So I actually wanted to have Gabby, our landscape architect, walk, walk us through kind of the rooftop all the way to underground, and how we're dealing with stormwater, and really a multifaceted approach on this project.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening. I'm Gabriela Canamar from Land Design. I just, last, in the last work session, we touched a little briefly on the multi-pronged approach to stormwater via the entire sort of master plan. And we felt like maybe illustrating the different types of stormwater management measures that are going to be put in place could help illustrate that. And I'm going to probably ask Antoinette to fill in more of, Antoinette, our civil engineer, to fill in more of the technical aspects and the sort of that, more of the quantification of some of these elements. But from a design perspective, we talked about, if you imagine the buildings from the roof all the way down, we will start with having a, and there's a diagram after this, to show you how the, a green roof component, which is the upper-left sort of examples of the photo, which is basically a ceno mix, is basically a carpet, is your sort of, it's called extensive green roof, it's got a certain capacity for stormwater detention and treatment after that. And that will be in some of the buildings, and then there's a diagram to show you the sort of that, the sort of the areas, they're intended for that. And there still need to be coordinated with all of the mechanical and all of the other components of a rooftop, very much like that roof that you see in the upper left, which just happens to be our office in Old Town. On the, past the roof, the very actual penthouse, coming down to above podium, will have the private amenities spaces for some of the buildings, especially the residential. And so it becomes more of a buyer retention type of strategy, which is a deeper, it's more intensive landscaping, and, you know, some of the examples that you expect to see in courtyards, which are raised planters, that have a lot of, you know, depth. There's a variety of planting, you know, plants that go into those. There's a sort of ponding, and there's a square, there's a cross-section that is designed to sort of withstand and, you know, sort of the stormwater events and water that comes down from the downspouts of the building. Actually, that photo, the little rectangular on the left, where it says, right above buyer retention, you'll see some of the downspouts coming, feeding into some of the planters. So that's sort of the secondary, the second sort of tier. Down at the street level, you'll see some of the, or buyer retention, the downright, the down, lower right, excuse me, that's another example of buyer retention planters in a courtyard, sort of that kind of idea, where you get that ponding effect, you have the layers of the landscaping, and then there's a downspout that brings the water from the rooftop. The rain gardens is the photo in the middle, which is kind of a street level, and we do have some areas where we can dedicate a little more of a expressed kind of rain garden typology. And there's two or three different kinds. There's the kind that go right by the curb, which are a little more structured, which is right behind the curb, is really basically a rectangle, is a planter, and it has like that ponding depth that we have along the commons on both sides, flanking the open space. And then lastly, once you go down below ground in the garages, we do have vaults, and this is a little more beyond my expertise, as Antoinette can explain a little bit more, how many throughout the project they're anticipated to be. Antoinette, are you online?
It's Karen White, I'm here.
Karen, hi, Karen.
Hello. And I, if you can go to the next slide, I think it's a good summary, and it really kind of show, oop, sorry, not yet.
Sorry, I switched the order.
This is okay. So this is the one that I was referring to. So as you can see, the plan view, like a rooftop, you know, the, the, from the roof down, that, that one is a perfect diagram that Brian prepared. So you can see the buildings that would accommodate and receive some extensive green roof, which is your sort of like relatively shallow, but has the capacity for the, for the stormwater management at the roof level. Again, to be finalized with, you know, once all the mechanical equipment and everything else comes to play, but that's, those are the areas that are anticipated to be.
And it's, it's a little hard to see in the, sorry, go back for one second, in the courtyards in the large apartment building, but the, the note in there says, we will have the additional buyer retention put in there, it's just we're working on the design of what, what's going to happen in those courtyards. So, thank you.
So then, so then, once the water, roof water, or the rainwater goes through these green roof systems and these, these buyer retention systems that are on the buildings, if we can go to the next slide, you'll see that, you know, we then have to capture the water, thank you, again, and to store that water. So in green, you'll see there's large detention vaults that are all throughout the site. Some of them in Block A are part of the garage, like kind of incorporated into the garage structure, as with Block D. You see for B3, that there's some, some vaults are under the, the road there, and against on B1, too, they're outside the structure. So that water is going to treat the roof water, so as the roof water comes through the green roofs, any, the buyer retention, it'll then kind of filter through to these detention vaults to add that additional storage, to really hold back and reduce the, the runoff. So when the SCE was approved, we had talked about, you know, trying to achieve a 10% reduction in the 10-year storm, and we're closer to 12% with our final design. And that's, that's what those green, large green vaults really do throughout the site. And then you'll also see in blue, what, they're kind of smaller vault structures, and those are really, as you can kind of see in the middle there, those are filtering structures. So the phosphorus removal, you know, we, we meet some of our phosphorus removal requirements with the green roof, the buyer retention, and permeable pavement, but, you know, there was, there were more, there was more credits or, you know, more phosphorus we needed to remove, so we added these additional blue vaults, which just filter the water. They're, they, the, they're maintained, they have to be changed every three to five years, the filters, but they're just an underground structure. So these are the, so Gabby kind of went through all the, the measures we're doing that can be seen, and these are all the kind of measures that are underground, that, you know, folks generally visiting the site might not always know they're there, but there is a lot kind of going on underground to, to, to meet these requirements and help with the, address the stormwater.
Great, thank you. Okay, we can go to the next, kind of in, in conjunction with the stormwater questions, we know a lot of sustainability and resiliency questions have come up about the project too. So just a quick reminder of where we are with lead at this time. Again, we are continuing, we've just completed the design development drawings for most of the buildings and are about to go into construction documents. And so we are continuing to target our lead goals and actually work to be a little bit above some of these numbers, to make sure that we have a cushion when we go in for certification. Let's go to the next slide. And then there've been a couple of questions about energy performance and EUIs, and compared to the Seventh Wave Report that was originally commissioned by the Environmental Council of the, of Falls Church. So we actually have Jen Wolfe from Sustainable Building Partners to talk us through a little bit more about our energy design.
Hi, yes, thanks, Laura. Jen Wolfe with Sustainable Building Partners. Just to kind of go through how we're progressing on energy performance for each one of the buildings, we really used those EUI goals included as part of that Seventh Wave Report, and then we built from there. So we set our goals relative to those EUIs. You know, we had a lot of early conversations with all of our project teams and performed box model analyses to further inform the energy performance, and had really comprehensive conversations with each one of the project teams to identify some energy efficiency opportunities that we can incorporate into, into all of the designs. So those EUI goals, you know, are our baseline, and we built from there to further reduce the EUI and increase energy performance in all of the buildings. So to just, I, next slide shows a representation on how we've kind of progressed relative to energy performance. This is the hotel site, for example. So we had that goal of 66 that was provided by Seventh Wave as kind of that baseline. We did our box model analysis, that was our very early SD analysis. We went through some goal setting and some EEO iterations relative to the envelope, the HVAC, lighting controls, et cetera. And then we, we did our, our first, like, full design energy model iteration and came out, you know, with EUI about 60, and energy cost savings of 15%. And then we went through another EEO iteration with that project team. So we're, we're using this kind of, the, the design development process to, to iterate the energy performance. So we have some more measures that are further reducing the EUI for the building, and that we're exploring with the project team to increase energy cost savings and decrease the energy use intensity of the project. So we're, we're anticipating to go through our next design model iteration here soon, and exploring a way, you know, right now, that's coming out around, we have a path to about an EUI 53, and we're going to, you know, continue to use this process to, to talk about strategies that can be incorporated into the project.
And Jen, thank you. Just to clarify, because I know we just looked at two different sets of numbers, so the lead scorecard, we want to be going up, more points or better. EUI, we want to be going down. So it is a positive that we are moving from 66 down to 53, just so we're, we're all following along on, on that piece. But thank you for, for that update. Let's keep going to the next slide. Question had come up just about the kind of general idea of the commons continuing through the, through Virginia Tech and Womata to the metro. And again, this is, these are from some of our earlier presentations, the general idea of how you create this spine that would really make an attractive walk. That's something we are still continuing to work through, obviously with the Virginia Tech campus changing. It's, it's something that's still in discussion, but we still think that that vision is important to continue to make our site feel part of the bigger site and connected to the metro. So we'll continue to pursue that as we move forward. Next slide. And then these are all the ones that I did not come up with pretty pictures for, but the last few other issues that came up with the VCs. So the affordable dwelling units, and we can talk about that more, but we went back to look at the original VCs and just, you know, continuing the discussion with, with the perimeters that were put in place in 2019, where we were looking at 6% of the total dwelling units, and that the apartments could end up housing the ADUs from the condominiums also. So we can discuss that in the question and answer. And then two other more technical questions that have come up with the, in the VCs, and I think, I wanted to put them in here, but I think we'd like to probably just continue to use our staff conversations, but square footage flexibility, we are looking for a 1% to 2% GSF flexibility with the with the, um, with, with all of our GSF measurements in the, in the project. And we, um, I think got a little stymied in explaining, uh, some of the reasons you would need a 1% to 2% threshold, um, and that is something as simple as going from a skin change, like, uh, um, flush facade to a brick facade, you're adding 6 to 8 inches, you multiply that by, if you just look at a 22-foot bay of an apartment, um, you know, that could be a 1.6 or 1.7% um, increase in the GSF, because GSF is measured per the, the new definition that's been put into the VCs, um, from the outside facade of the building. So something that's a 6-inch difference, when spread out over 400,000 square feet, um, could make a 100, 1% difference. Um, there are also a lot of the grosser requirements we're working through right now, how much mezzanine space they need, how much indoor or outdoor space they need. So we're just looking for that flexibility to make sure that we are meeting our, um, either minimum or maximum GSFs, but just with the, the flexibility that buildings are, um, complicated and 3D and have a lot of ins and outs and little details that get worked through, um, the process, so. And then the last piece was just the, uh, timing of the residential permits. Uh, we just want to make sure that we are using the, uh, plan submission requirements as our checklist, uh, to allow when the office and the, uh, when the office and the hotel go in for permits, then we are allowed to, uh, pull certificate of occupancies for the resident, residential, um, building, so. Those are all of our items, uh, that we wanted to make sure you guys understood how we were addressing them, so we can take any questions.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your responses and your taking into account the comments you heard previously. Um, let's go ahead and open up to questions and comments. Um, I think the notion today was focusing on affordable dwelling units. Mr. Shields, do you have anything to add, uh, staff-wise?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So the discussions that we've been having over the past several weeks have been on two provisions in the, in the VCs, and they were approved as part of the special exception entitlement. And, um, as Ms. Schoenfeld did note, there is, uh, there, in that SCE approval, there was this concept of transferring the condo units, uh, ADUs to the apartments. Um, in addition to that, there's also a concept of converting units to cash. And so, um, we, we've been having a discussion about what the cash value is of, uh, those units, and we've not reached a conclusion on those. Um, and so we are just trying to follow the original SCE as approval and just explore all those options. And, um, and, uh, at this point, I think we're, um, we don't have a, a firm recommendation on this, uh, for the city council, so we would like to take a little bit more time to get resolution on it.
All right, thank you. Um, again, we'll open it up to questions and comments from council. Uh, let's see what we've got here. Mr. Snyder?
So thanks a lot. This is more a question for Wyatt and, um, Carol McCroskey. Um, do we have the ability to increase the ADUs up to the 10% um, that we got in another project, uh, without paying for them as was done in the other project by taking money from the schools? Do we have the leverage and the capability under the, um, agreement to, um, force an increase in the ADUs without otherwise paying the difference, um, in the loss of other VCs?
So to do so unilaterally, uh, would be problematic. The, uh, in, in the conference, this, this was a threshold issue early on in the project. Affordable housing is obviously one of the kind of primary things that any developer needs to know at the outside of a project, because it is a major financial commitment, is part of their entire financial plan for a project. So the 6% of units at 60% AMI is in the comprehensive agreement. It's also in the special exception entitlement. And so the task during the SESP, as staff has approached it, is then to, uh, make sure that that is implemented fully in this site plan.
So let me just follow up.
Carol might add to that, but that's, uh, that's my response.
No, I, I think that's correct, that is what is in the, um, was agreed to in the comprehensive agreement. So without, uh, so there isn't anything clearly that would enable, um, council to change that term.
Uh-huh, okay. Um, the second question I have, again, for city staff, is I would like a financial accounting of where we started this process, the amount of payments, the timing of those payments versus where we are now and where we would likely to be under the current status of the agreement. So I'd like that, a pure financial review of, um, where we thought we were going to be at this point and in the next, say, five years versus where we are now, um, after multiple changes and various considerations given to the developer. Um, so those are, those are a couple of the areas. I, I want to thank the developer for a greater explanation of their management of stormwater. It does seem odd to me, however, that we're still only handling or planning for a 10-year event when we know the 100-year events are happening almost every other year. So I'm still trying to figure out why design standards would permit only a 10-year storm, um, infrastructure, but obviously very impressive what you've done within that, uh, within that standard. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harding.
Thank you. Um, I was primarily expecting conversation about the affordable units, but I appreciated the update from the developer on everything else. Um, one question on the VCs, I think I read that the civic space in commons was going to be available for use by the city or the public. Um, have we thought through, is it going to be like a rental fee? Or do we need agreements on what that user structure is going to look like?
So we've started those conversations, um, as part of trying to tie up the loose ends in the, in the VCs, and I think, um, we, we still need a little more work with the staff on that. There, again, there will probably be, um, some events that are done in conjunction with the city and in conjunction with, with private groups or other, other groups of citizens. Um, and I think there is a way to make it so it's not, um, unaffordable, but also to make sure that things like, um, things like trash and security and additional costs that, um, come up through events like that will be taken care of. So we're still working on exactly the right compromise for that.
Great, I think we have a, you know, shared desire for this being active and good space for the public use, so hopefully we can work out something that's agreeable to everybody. Um, so on the affordable units, um, so I guess, given that we don't have a final recommendation, I'll share at least kind of some working principles in my head of hopefully where we will end up. Um, so I guess first of all, I believe that having inclusionary zone units, that 6% is important. As much as I would share the desire from, uh, Dave Snyder to actually boost that number, I know that we've inked the deal at 6% and 60% AMI, so I'm, I'm fine with that, although obviously more is always better. Um, I would look to city staff to provide the recommendation on, if we don't want to do 6% at 60% AMI, what that different mix is. I know that we wanted to trade for potentially less units for lower AMI so we can serve a more diverse income range, and so hopefully we can get to a good number on what the value of those 6%, 60% AMI units are, and then just translate that into different value units if we think that that actually serves a need in the city. So that's kind of the first point is, as long as the math is the same, kind of going in and coming out, um, hopefully we can work out a number there. Second, personally, I believe ownership is important, so I know that we have condos, and the challenge there is that having affordable condos also comes with high condo fees. And so staff recommends that we don't, we can't do that, um, and we want to convert to cash or, uh, apartments elsewhere. Um, a question for Wyatt and Carol, is the language in the VCs currently say that it's a city and developer joint decision to make that conversion? Are not the sole developer's decision?
So in the, um, SCE, it was phrased as the owner may make a cash contribution, but that cash contribution must be mutually agreed to by the city and the owner. And then if we don't reach that agreement, then the owner will provide the ADUs. Um, and the ADUs are in perpetuity.
Okay. Um, so I guess I would agree with that, that hopefully that if we can't come to something that we would have the inclusionary zone units, but hopefully we can come to a value that if we decide that we can't have affordable condos because of the high condo fees, that we can agree on what that cash equivalent would be. And then the third point, primarily for staff, is while obviously I believe that inclusionary zone units are important, that if we do go cash for some of these, that use that cash for conversion, that we actually have a good use for that. I don't want the money to sit idle in the affordable housing fund. I want to make sure that staff has a good recommendation on what we might want to do. Um, and to that end, I think a broader conversation as we talk about, third item on our agenda tonight for the Amazon grant is, I would love for us to actually figure out what the targets are for the housing unit and type and AMI levels so that we know what to aim for. I think right now our answer is we just need more across the board, and we know that we need to serve those lower AMIs below 60%. But I think a request I would have for housing staff is, you know, by housing unit and AMI levels, let's have a citywide target of what that looks like for future demands so that we know when we're doing these negotiations what we should be aiming for.
Letty, just to your first question, we are continuing to work on, um, looking at 40% and 80% AMI, um, per the city's recommendation last fall, but also other, other options, exactly how to, uh, lay out the ADUs, um, but we're having kind of those more technical conversations on, on the side.
Terrific, thank you. I think what we found is, Lena, our learning from the last, uh, the Broad and Washington project is, if we're transparent in the value of these units, hopefully it's just a simple math problem to figure out that if 6% units at 60% AMI, you know, is valued at this much, we can essentially convert that amount depending on what the value of alternative units are.
Yes, that's the, the general principle we're working with, um, and we will continue the discussion with, with staff on that.
And when do we need to wrap up these discussions, Wyatt?
So we are still working, we have on the schedule, uh, final council consideration of the, uh, the VCs and the SESP at your, uh, last meeting in May. And so, um, my goal is to wrap this up, uh, was to wrap it up prior to this meeting, but to wrap it up in the coming days so that we could present it to you on the 17th, and then, um, and then, uh, have sort of a final wrap-up at that work session on the 17th.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan? Phil?
Thank you. If I could just ask one question about the additional uses, merchandising plan, I guess, aspect. Uh, um, thanks for those pictures. I'm wondering if we could just tap your expertise and experience about some of the kind of uses that you're showing. You know, are those the kind of retail ground floor uses that, uh, you know, are going to sign a 10-year deal and, you know, hopefully be in place for some time? Or, or is there something new going on in the retail environment where you're looking for, uh, entities and operations that would be, you know, testing the waters for two, three years, sort of, you know, maybe somewhat trying to be nimble to market changes on? I, my concern here, I mean, I've always been on board with the idea that you're going to flood the zone, you know, we're going to open all the restaurants and all the retail, it's going to be a place to be from day one. That's very exciting, and I hope that turns out to be. Our experience in some of the smaller developments has been that landlords sometimes sit on empty spaces for years without filling them. And I'm just wondering, uh, if you're showing these new kind of hipster uses, I mean, you know, there's no Pier 1 anymore, you know, we've got to have a bowling alley. So obviously the environment is changing. Um, you know, are you still, are you still, still feeling confident that this is going to be the kind of development that is going to be able to, uh, fill up from the beginning? And, and, and what's your experience at Mosaic about, um, the staying power of some of the original, um, participants and, and developments like that?
Right, so I think, um, I mean, it's, it's a great question, and there's, you know, the last 15 months have taught us any assumptions we have about retail can be upended quite easily. Um, I think we see it as, as a mix, as some, um, retailers or bigger restaurants that are going to come in and they're committing that this is their 10-year place, and some that may have slightly shorter, um, leases, but would allow, again, turnover of, of new things that we don't even know about yet that, you know, will be a big deal in 2027 and will want to have space for that. But I think that we generally, um, so we're starting to work with a retail broker, and we can kind of, we've had a discussion with staff about this and can kind of have a, a smaller, uh, discussion with, with council, um, if, if that would be helpful, uh, about, you know, really creating a place. And I, I do think that one of the most important things is, is it's really this, um, you know, we've got to have all of these, all of this space together. The, the collective is what's going to get more, more and more people to, um, lease in the space, use the space. So these smaller developments that just don't have the critical mass, um, that's one reason that we are kind of timing everything to basically open all, all at the same time. So, um, you know, a lot can change between now and 2024, but our general plan is to have anchors, mini, you know, our grocer anchor, some other mini anchors, and then, um, other, other places that are committed, but other places that allow for flexibility so that the space will always feel new and, and fresh. And I would say in our experience at the Wharf, um, you know, we were only open for about two and a half years before the, um, the pandemic happened, and we've kept a lot of our, um, uh, original tenants, but we also have gotten a lot of new tenants, either in empty space or space that people left. And it's made it new and exciting now that people are coming back out more. Um, I think they're enjoying the, the, all the new places to go to. So I think it's, it's just finding that right balance between, um, commitment and flexibility so that you can feel, you know, you always go back to your favorite place, but there's also new options.
Okay, good, I like that commitment and flexibility, that's a nice. I think it's just important for the community to understand, you know, just how fluid an environment it is and, you know, the sort of traditional uses that, uh, might have been associated with ground floor retail are, by and large, past and gone now. And so we're trying to create something new. And 2024 used to sound like it was a long way away, but it doesn't sound so far away anymore. So, yeah, certainly I'd like to learn more about that. If the Economic Development Committee, uh, had a special session on that, uh, others, uh, might join in and, uh, learn, it'd be useful to learn from your experience here, uh, and how that might apply to other locations in the city. So thank you.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and we just, I think, you know, we'll, we'll continue to know more as we get closer to 2024, but we're continuing to, um, kind of have our general idea of the direction we want to go in, which is in the primary and secondary, but then also, um, continuing to have flexibility. It's, it's again, kind of, it's a little bit of an art and a little bit of a science to, to make retail work.
All right, thank you. So let's see if our representative from the Housing Commission, Josh Shakur, do you have, um, any thoughts or comments you wanted to make? I don't know if you're still with us or not, you're certainly welcome to join the conversation or to, to make any comments or ask any questions if, uh, if you so choose.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, no thoughts at the moment, I just, uh, you know, I, I, we approved, um, uh, the recommendations that were originally put forth with this development, and we just hope that, um, they stay the way they are and they aren't changed, um, dramatically, uh, from the current standing.
All right, well, I know you all will be actively involved as this project continues and goes forward, and we'll continue to seek your, your guidance and direction, uh, as to housing matters. Does anyone else have any other comments? We do have a number of other items on the agenda for tonight. If not, I'll say thank you, uh, again, to, uh, our folks on the 10 acres. We do appreciate the changes you've made, I think they're all a step in the right direction. Um, I'm not necessarily saying, at least from my own perspective, that we're done, but I do think you have made some real changes that, um, are positive, and so we thank you for that, and ask that you continue to work with us and staff and the community to, uh, further advance the project. Um, so with that, let's move on to the Amazon Reach Grant.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. Mr. Shields?
Thank you. The next two items, council, we're intending to just give very concise staff reports, uh, because we know, uh, we do have a closed session at the end of this meeting. And so the first is to provide a staff update on, uh, our thinking on our next Amazon Reach Grant application. It's great to have the Housing Commission Chair, uh, Mr. Shakur, join us for this discussion as well. Let me turn it over to Dana Lewis, she'll give the staff report. Nancy Vincent and Cindy Mester have also been integrally involved in this, and they're here for questions. Uh, Nancy, uh, sorry, Dana?
Morning, everybody, I mean, morning, good evening, everybody, uh, council members. Um, so I just wanted to give you a brief overview of- So I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the grant proposal that we are working on right now. So as you know, we received funding for year two. We were not eligible for year one, but what we are applying for now is years three through five funding, which is being combined. And we are able to apply up to, for up to $5 million of funds. And so our purpose tonight is to ask for council to give us feedback on our concept. And so, like I said, we're asking for the full $5 million. We don't have a lot of time. The deadline is June 15th for us to have the completed application submitted. And so what we are looking to do is to develop a strike acquisition fund with the funding if we were to receive it. And so the first project that we are looking at is funds would be used to purchase properties in the city to maintain affordability in the South Washington corridor as indicated in the South Washington Street Corridor Planning Opportunity Area Two. So what we would be looking to do is to use that funds, work with a real estate partner to purchase fund, I mean, purchase properties as they become available or to proactively look to purchase those properties. And then we would maintain affordability and then at a later point in time, we may do something, a larger multi-family development in, in the future. Project two is to purchase a single family home in the city and to convert it into a duplex. And so this is allowed, you know, current zoning allows for this and there are duplexes in the city already. And so what we would be looking to do is to do something creative with a really good design to kind of show, as a demonstration project to kind of show what duplex could look like in the city and how it can really integrate well within neighborhood. And so both projects that we are looking at were actually suggested by the Housing Commission. We had a brainstorming session where they came up with about five different ideas and these were the two that we decided to run with. And so, and so at this point, we have been, we met with several real estate partners just to get their thoughts on how this might work. We do have one that would be interested in working with us. And we also have met with Virginia Housing, the same way we did with year two, to get their feedback on our concept. And then they are taking it back to the larger group to kind of get, to give us feedback on where we should go with the project. So we met with them today. This was our first meeting. And so our next step was just to bring it to you all and get your feedback on what we, you know, on, on the, the concept. So that was, I'm being brief as I was asked.
That's great. We like it. Brief is good. All right. So let's see if anyone else wants to comment. I see Mr. Lichtenhouse has his hand up.
I do.
Ross?
Dana, just quickly for a point of clarification, for the, the houses or the units that we're looking to buy, that real estate partner is going to manage those for us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Thanks, Dana. I, I guess my main question, you mentioned some, these could be rentals or ownership properties?
So the project one will be rental properties. The second project, the duplex, we have not determined whether that would be rental or homeownership at this point.
And how many single family homes would you be able to purchase with this money? Just one or more than one and have a mortgage?
We don't really know. I mean, it would depend on how much we would be spending per unit. I mean, but, you know, possibly eight. We don't really have a, a number exactly of how many we would purchase, but we would be looking in the South Washington corridor.
So you would, so you wouldn't be purchasing them 100% with the funding? You'd be putting a down payment on and continuing to pay on that?
No, we would be, Cindy, feel free to jump in, but no, we would be purchasing and the city would also be providing match for that. And then the, the real estate partner would hold it. You know, they would be the owner and property manager. We would provide the funds.
And we may have an opportunity to pair this with some Virginia Housing loan programs to make the money go farther in the project one in order to consolidate and then have a future redevelopment. The project two is really a, a concept for innovation pilot type project to test the waters, if that would work for the city.
So I guess I'm wondering where the rent would go to? Would that go back to the city? Would it go towards paying down the properties? Maybe that's too much in the weeds, but.
Yeah, I would say we haven't gotten to that detail, Dana, but for project, year two, project one, we had talked about having a second trust and then it would come back and be a revolving fund to assist other homeowners. For the EDA recent property, that rental was covering maintenance, property management and the loan. So it depends on how we structure, based on Virginia Housing feedback.
Thank you. And I, I think the duplex idea is a really interesting and creative one and I would love to be able to see how that works. So that one requires a lot more exposure, but very creative. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I was actually going to ask to see whether Josh wanted to chime in first. I'm going to give him my turn and then I'll speak.
Why don't you go ahead and we can, if he wants to join in, he can, but if you have something to say, why don't you go ahead and say it?
Okay. So the first idea, are we talking about the Virginia Village area, kind of continue the acquisition that we just did?
Yes.
Okay. It wasn't mentioned, so I didn't know if there were different properties in the South Washington area we're looking at. So that one I would definitely support, given kind of what we started and the opportunities we identified. The idea of the duplex, so as much as I like the idea of trying out duplexes, I worry that it may not be the most efficient use of funds. So we probably spend, you know, $750,000 to $1 million buying a piece of land and then having to rehab and then redevelop it into two units, which I think then would only create two housing units for probably over $1 million. So I wonder if there's, you know, again, I think it's creative and innovative, but if we're looking to create kind of more housing units, I wonder if there's other mechanisms for doing so. One of the other ideas that was discussed in the Housing Commission is being able to buy down rent in other buildings, knowing that in older buildings, the money will go down farther. And so to my earlier point around making sure we have targets for how many housing units we need by housing type and income levels, we can identify where the gaps are based on demand in the city. So that would be an idea that I'd like us to consider as well. So that's it for now.
All right. Thank you. Josh Shakur?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I fully support, the Housing Commission fully supports both these applications. I, I know we definitely lean towards the purchasing and acquisition of Virginia Village quads as there's a prospect for future development and the ability to preserve affordability for some of the more low income households in the city. I, I guess I would ask is, is there a specific strategy behind submitting two applications for this rather than just one, other than maybe just hedging your bets on that we'll actually get the funding? And that's to you, Dana or Cindy?
Yeah, we just, we decided, we did the same thing in the last round where we had two projects and so they're all part of the one project. But one thing we're also considering is having that duplex possibly be one of the purchases that we make with our round two funding. Cindy, did you want to add to that? That's something that we talked about today with Virginia.
Sure. I think that's, thank you, Dana. I think that's a fair question and that was part of our brainstorming with Virginia Housing to kind of see what other options would be most competitive because they're going to look for Amazon for how many units is it producing? Is it preserving, expanding? And so a one standalone may not score as well on an Amazon, but it does float maybe some other ideas and other innovation funding we could go with Virginia Housing. So it was useful to get feedback today. Also, we wanted to build off of the Housing Commission's recommendations. I know there was a good list of five. Some are more complex and we don't have time or money to pull them off, but certainly these two projects were on that list of brainstorming.
I guess my only concern would be, I know we, we won both of the two applications last time and we, I, I can't remember the amount that we totaled to got. I think it might've been around 3.75 million or so. I would be concerned that if we're doing two applications, that they'll split the final amount that we get between both projects rather than us be able to get a, a larger amount to concentrate solely on the Virginia Village type of projects and acquisitions. That would be my only concern.
It's a fair point. And when, we had two projects last time, but it was actually one application. So we intentionally worded it that it would be up to for each not to exceed the total so to build in some flexibility. So that's an option we could consider this time as well.
That's good. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
I think, you know, Chair Josh said just about everything that I would say, so I won't repeat that. I've long been an advocate of an aggressive policy regarding Virginia Village. I mean, I think that's, that's a great opportunity to preserve existing affordable housing and also if we are landholders there, it gives us long-term potential to consolidate and, and do a medium rise or even higher rise building that really would move the needle on the numbers of affordable units, which are of course slipping even despite our efforts at the newer buildings. So, yeah, I would, I mean, if it's, if it makes us look good to have the project two idea there, that's fine, but I would love to see us concentrate on Virginia Village. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Let me ask regarding ownership, I thought I had heard a minute or two ago that it would actually be held by someone else. Why wouldn't a city have ownership of these units? Retain ownership in our name?
Dana, do you want to take that first?
Well, we're not legally able to do that. I mean, currently we, I know that we do, the, the one that we, that was just purchased, you know, the Economic Development Authority purchased that, but we would not be able to be the holders of it. The city would not be able to hold those properties.
I mean, the EDA would be, that's a political subdivision of the city and so to my mind, as opposed to some third party owner, seems that that might be preferable.
I think one of the things we're exploring and Dana and Nancy can add, and I know Carol can speak to the legal piece, is when we're talking about a real estate partner, we're also thinking about a nonprofit one that has this value and vision that would be an agreement with us that we could look at the long-term redevelopment. So we wouldn't hold the, the property and we wouldn't be managing it, but we'd be involved in the decision-making as it progressed.
I understand. I guess nonetheless, my preference would be to have it subject to some, I mean, the EDA to me is preferable to a third party irrespective of, you know, their intentions or for-profit nature. It seems like that's a, just gives the city maximum flexibility and control. So just a thought, it's probably premature for that, but I would just plant that, that marker. Letty?
Yeah, I had two other questions. So just to, I'm hearing based on the comments, sounds like everyone supports idea number one. On idea number two, the conversion to duplex, I know that the staff report said that it is allowed in R1B provided it meets various requirements. Has staff done a look at the parcels in the city and how many parcels would fit this criteria and how many would be interested in selling?
We've not done that analysis. We just, you know, we just know around what size it would need to be, but no, we've not done that.
Okay. And then the second question I had is really around kind of again, going back to what the targets are, how many housing units we need to produce of various sizes and types? If we can bump that against up, for example, our waitlist of people waiting for ADUs, my sense is that we should be looking at opportunities to help kind of get people off that waitlist. I mean, some people have been on that waitlist for many years now. And so if we can create housing for those, that population, that's where the demand is. That's where I think we're, my head is at least in terms of wanting to meet the housing demand that's out there. Thank you.
All right. Josh, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly follow up on your concern, Mr. Mayor. The last time we arranged a partnership with a nonprofit in the city to acquire a quad in Virginia Village, that was FCAHC and they ended up selling it a few years ago due to the fact of enabled management and it was too expensive for them because of the last time the deals fell through on the redevelopment of that area. So I'd be very careful of getting into an agreement with another nonprofit or third party to hold the property going forward without language in there to protect the city's ownership or interest in that property. Thank you.
Uh huh. Good point. Thank you. All right. Is there anything else, any other comments? We do again have a closed session and another item as well. So if not, thank you all and we look forward to hearing more from this and continuing our good streak as far as getting affordable housing grants and the like. So thank you. Let's move on now to our next item, the budget agenda. Mr. Shields?
Thank you. And Ms. Bawa will give the staff report on the budget amendment.
All right. And before we get too far along, several of us would like to make a disclosure, but go ahead, Ms. Bawa. We'll do that while we're pulling up our, our forms.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. We have before you the fourth and hopefully the last budget amendment for this fiscal year 2021. So in a nutshell, for general fund, we are requesting expenditure of 2.14 million for the West Falls Church Development Project. 1.92 of that is for the relocation of the regulator's station for Washington Gas and 220,000 for legal and other consulting fees related to the closing of the ground lease by December. We are requesting a transfer of 2 million from the capital reserve and reallocation of 140,000 from the unexpended debt service, which is already in the budget. The next item is a reprogramming of 564,000 in current year under spending from public safety, sheriff's office and recreation and parks to fund CIP, to fund the Pago projects that were excluded from the fiscal year 2022 budget, which included NTC sidewalks and city facilities upgrades and also to fund DPW to pay for sharos on Park Avenue, redo crosswalks and some other miscellaneous stuff. And 4,000 for assistance for EAC, Employee Advisory Council. The next item is an appropriation of the federal grant received for body worn cameras, which is for a little shy of 50,000 and an equal amount required as a local match, which will be used, for which we plan to use savings from the police department operating budget from the current fiscal year. And finally, an appropriation request of 805,000 for school activity fund as per, and this is a requirement as per the new GAZB standard 84 that, that just came out. I do want to mention also that we have two requests that are not included in this report, but will be included in the first reading of the ordinance next Monday. And one is of course the item you just heard, the appropriation of the 4.15 million for affordable housing, homeownership program and teacher workforce units program, which is funded by 3.75 million grant, the Amazon Reach, Grant Reach Virginia Program and 400,000, the required local match that's coming from Affordable Housing Fund. And also an appropriation of 50,000 of contribution received from the Library Foundation for the Mary Riley Styles, Mary Riley Styles Public Library Expansion and Renovation Project to pay for the mural and staff furniture. And that concludes my report. Happy to address any questions.
All right. Before we get to questions, there may be some declarations people would like to make. Would anyone like to make a declaration before I make mine?
I'll go ahead.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I make, I make the following statement before City Council's discussion of TO 21-09 and amendment to the FY 2021 general fund budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Snyder, anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, although it is not strictly required, I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of TO 21-09, an amendment to the FY 2021 budget by independent adult daughter is. My independent adult daughter is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore is a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to make the following statement before City Council's consideration of TO 21-09, an amendment to the FY 2021 budget. My wife's an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in the matter, however, fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. All right, so with that, let's open up to questions. I think the first one comes from Ms. Hardy. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. First, thank you for getting money to restore the traffic calming sidewalks and facilities. I think it didn't even take us a week since last week's budget, so I appreciate that that made it in so quickly from FY 21 savings. Two questions. One is, I thought we were also going to have the schools' request to use the final balance of the CARES Act money to fund summer school programs? Is that coming or not needed anymore?
So the request that they have will be funded as per their needs. The request is in fiscal 22. They do not need to spend any existing money, and we are anticipating that will be funded as part of the ARPA.
Got it. So do we still have a balance then of CARES money?
We do, and that will be used to draw down on employee-staff time and leave.
Okay.
When we submit for reimbursement, request for CARES reporting.
Okay. And then, kind of related to the item for the police body cams, maybe not part of the budget amendment, but when we get those up and running, or before we get them up and running, Wyatt, I think we should talk through what the policies are around it. So, you know, what they'll be for, when they have to be on or off, any privacy concerns, what sort of storage requirements. I think all those details, I think, will be important to share with council and the public.
Yes, these all do need to be written out. They would typically be written out in the form of the general orders that govern all the activities of the Police Department, but we can share those with the council before those are finalized.
Great. And when do we expect, I guess, the launch of body cams?
Let me get, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. Let me get a response from the Police Department on that schedule.
Great. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Pursuant to my question earlier tonight, to whom do we pay the money for the moving of the gas facilities? And when do we have to pay it? And if the answer to either of those questions is Washington Gas and later, can we possibly fold that into a cost that would be covered by the CDA?
So the, it would be paid to Washington Gas. That's who the payment is made to. And the city has actually paid the deposit so that that work would stay on schedule. That was necessary to do, so we didn't lose a summer. The work has to happen in the summertime, and so if that order weren't placed, then it would, we'd miss a year. We accommodated that through, basically now trying to correct for it with the budget amendment. In terms of charging it to the CDA, let me talk with the city attorney about that. I think there is a clear-cut answer to that, but I would like to discuss that with the city attorney before providing that response.
Okay, I appreciate you doing that. Obviously, if it's permitted, that's what I'm for. You know, Washington Gas knows where to find us and knows that we're good for it. So, yeah, if it's legal, let's try it. Second, Mrs. Hardy's comments about the staff quickly finding money to fill in for the items that were temporarily set aside last week when we voted on the budget, traffic calming and so forth. That's very good. Appreciate the effort to, you know, look into the cushions and find loose change. I'm glad we're finding a good bit of it. While we're at it, I wonder if another expense that we've talked about and done in previous years, mine could be accommodated in our plans in this budget amendment, which is extending the run of the festive lighting on Broad Street, at least up to the mid-city area. I don't know exactly how much money's involved, but I think that's a number that's pretty easily gettable. I just wonder if we could discuss that in the context of this budget amendment when we actually vote on it.
All right. Other comments, questions? Okay. Unless there's anything else on the budget amendment, why don't we take a short recess and come back in and close session? Before we go, and on our recess, do we want to go ahead and take this motion to go into closed session and then come back in after a recess into closed session?
Yes, please, because we'll still have the cameras up if you do the motions now.
All right. Let's go ahead and do the motion, then. It is now 9:44, and upon a motion made by Councilmember Duncan, and seconded by Councilmember?
Hiscott.
I got Hiscott. Passed by a vote of City Council, Council on a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Contract discussions regarding the conference agreement for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tarter? Yeah. All right, so we're now in closed session. Let's take a five-minute recess and reconvene in closed session at 9:50. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, both FCC TV and live stream are operational.
All right, we are now coming out of closed session and we're going to read a motion to come out of closed session and also certification. We'll start with the motion. Upon a motion made by Councilmember...
Duncan.
Duncan, and seconded by Councilmember...
Hardy.
Hardy, and passed by vote of City Council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Lichtenhouse.
Yes.
Iskut.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yeah.
Tarter, yep. All right, it is 10:20. This is our certification. Upon a motion made by Councilmember...
Snyder.
Snyder, and seconded by Councilmember...
Iskut.
Iskut, all right. And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Lichtenhouse.
Yes.
Iskut.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Tarter, yep. All right, so we are at a closed session. Are there any council schedule or other comments? All right, unless there's anything else to be said, are we ready to adjourn?
Moving to adjourn.
All right, all in favor? So we have second.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's call it a night. What do you say?
Thank you, Council. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you.